Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Lowell City Council to order. Please join me in the council prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for a special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me now in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Caulfield.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Mendonza.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Mayor Melanazo.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Broderick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Chair recognizes Counsel Rita Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for my dear friend Erica McGill, a longtime resident of the city's South Lowell section of the city, widow of Glenn McGill. She was born and received her education in Germany before immigrating to the United States as a young woman. She worked in the textile mills on Stackpole Street in Lowell for many years. When Erica retired, she crocheted and knitted beautiful Irish sweaters and gave them to many of her friends' children. She was very vocal with her thoughts on politics and often came to this very podium to tell us just what she thought. I personally thought she was just here to see her dear friend Tassie Puleus. Although she claimed she had no family, she did have a WCAP radio family who loved her dearly as she would call the show and speak openly about her likes and dislikes and that German accent that we all get a kick out of. It was a toss-up as to who she liked better, Warren Shaw or Morris Cohen. She was also known as the Mother Goose Lady of Bill Ricker Street, and we all know that the neighborhood will never be the same. She leaves behind many friends, Barbara the Cookie Lady, Bill the Comujin, Linda the Last American Housewife, John the Hickster, Gary the Ice Cream Man, the Crisman Family, and the Machado Family, Jackie the Birdseye Lady, Eileen, her favorite lawyer, Richard, her motorcycle neighbor, Ray, her motorcycle neighbor, and many more too numerous to mention, and Helen, who brought her an occasional beverage. We all will truly miss her, and I want to say lovingly, and lastly, rest in peace, you stinker. I would also like to have a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Louis Saab, for attorney Louis M. Saab, real estate entrepreneur, a man of Lebanese roots, having parents Joseph and Ladi, settle in a modest two-family home on Grand Street in the city's Lower Highland Neighborhood section of the city where Mr. Louis Saab grew up with his four brothers and one sister. He was a man who had little but achieved greatness and built an empire at one point owning 22 buildings downtown and thousands of apartments throughout the city. He was a 1948 graduate of Lowell High School and began practicing law in Lowell in 1958. He leaves behind a sister Rita, two brothers Peter and Thomas, and Thomas's wife Mary, who was a delightful sister-in-law to Louis. He was also the brother of the late Joseph and John. He leaves behind many friends, tenants, and employees, and if you were fortunate enough to be his friend, he was your friend for life. I was lucky to be one of them. He will be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Caulfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like a moment of silence with dock in chambers for Joseph Guthrie, a loving and devoted husband, father, grandfather, forming building commissioner of the city of Lowell. And everyone in City Hall knew Joe, everyone in the building trades knew Joe Guthrie. He was a good man, compassionate, loving person, did his job well, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Caulfield. May we all rise now in a moment of silence and dock in chamber. May they rest in peace. Now it gives me great pleasure to present some citations this evening. The first two go to the winners of the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce Art Walk competition. And what I'd like to do is ask Karen Bridgeron from the Greater Lowell Chamber to just come forward to the microphone and just maybe tell the council what the competition was about, and then what I can do is read the winners, and we do have two winners this evening. Karen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year is Art Walk 2010, and what we do is an annual event in which we invite the Arts League of Lowell artists to come in and with their bold imagination and their creativity, come into downtown Lowell and take empty windows and transfix them into just a brand-new culture and arts for the whole community to be able to enjoy. And we do have a, it is a competition, and we do have ballots. We invite the public to come down and to choose the artist that they enjoy the most. And we also have a juried of judges that come in, and they choose the winner. So tonight, we'd like to present the juried winner and the people's choice winner for Art Walk 2010.
Thank you, Karen, very much, and thank Jean Osborne and the other members of the Board of the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce for working on this effort. The first citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby congratulates Lauren Drake Santoro, Blue Lamb Design Group, and My New England Contractor for achieving the Art Walk 2010 Juried Award in the city of Lowell. Lauren is a mixed-media college artist and an aspiring interior designer. She is originally from Maryland and is new to the city of Lowell. Lauren's studio is located on Western Avenue, where you will find her paintings and Photoshop. The city of Lowell commends the dedication of Blue Lamb Design Group and My New England Contractor for its commitment to the Greater Lowell region. The entire city of Lowell extends its deepest wishes to Lauren for the continued success given this 24th day of August 2010 by James Al Melanazo and my colleagues here at the Lowell City Council. So it's my pleasure to present this to Lauren. The next citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby congratulates John Cassio Fine Art and Design for achieving the Art Walk 2010 People's Choice Award in the city of Lowell. John's studio is located at Western Avenue and exhibits in a number of group shows as well as one-man shows throughout the area. You can find his work displayed in the United States, Canada, and Puerto Rico. The city of Lowell commends the dedication of Fine Art and Design for its commitment to the Greater Lowell region. The entire city of Lowell extends its deepest wishes to John Cassio and Fine Art and Design for continued success given this 24th day of August 2010 by James Al Melanazo, the mayor, and my colleagues on the Lowell City Council. It's a pleasure for me to present this to John. Thank you again to those who competed and to the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce. It's now my pleasure to present a citation to a new business in the city of Lowell, Spin City Laundromat LLC. A number of us were at their opening a couple of weeks back on August 12th, and we invited them to come down tonight to be recognized for opening their store and for really giving back to the community. I know that the owner of the building, Bobby Maria, and his wife are here, and they just did a wonderful job in renovating the space. So it is my pleasure, on behalf of my colleagues, to present the citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby welcome Spin City Laundromat LLC as a new business to make its home in the city of Lowell. The city has honored that Spin City Laundromat LLC chose 182 Chuffett Street for their laundry service. Spin City Laundromat LLC provides state-of-the-art machines, flat-screen televisions, free Wi-Fi service, clean folding delivery service, as well as Children's Corner. The entire city of Lowell extends its appreciation and deepest wishes to Donna Christopoulos and Julie Kralakis for continued success given this now 24th day of August 2010 by James Al Melanazo, the mayor, along with my colleagues. We want to congratulate you and have you come forward.
Julie and I would like to thank you, Mayor Melanazo, and all the city councilors and the entire city of Lowell for welcoming Spin City Laundromat to the city, and we would extend an invitation to all of you to visit the laundromat. It's state-of-the-art, all-American-made machines, the largest machines in the city. It's clean, safe, free Wi-Fi, TV, a wash, dry, and fold service that is parallel to none, and we would like to extend an invitation for you all to come down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I would encourage you to stop by. Really, it's a very impressive facility. Thank you for being here. We did have another citation, but I do not see Emily Rosenbaum in the audience, so if it's okay with my colleagues, we'll put this off till the September 14th meeting. Thank you. Next item would be to approve the minutes of August 10th for acceptance. We do have a correction. Counselor Mendonza.
Yeah, on the second page, third paragraph, the vote in turn to license agreement. I voted no, so I asked that our move that it be corrected to show that eight yays, one nay.
Thank you, Counselor Mendonza. With that amendment, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye. Proves the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I could just say that before the city council meeting starts, sometimes we do bring in people to explain things, city department heads or whatever, and I try to get someone here to explain the meters with the numbers and things. I think we're still working on that because a lot of people come in and park near their meters with the numbers, and they don't know, some of them are still not up to par as to how that all takes place. We will, in the future, get Chakani here to explain that. We're working on it, and I just wanted, for those that are expecting him to be here tonight, we didn't, I didn't follow through with the person getting here, but we will, in the future, have him here with probably a demonstration on the TV as to how that works. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, just in response to Counsel Mercy, Mr. Marshand and I discussed this today, actually, your request, and I think what we're going to do is we're going to try to do a video.
Yes.
That we'll be able to show at the council meeting, and it'll be available to be shown on cable and.
Well, I did the best to explain it myself, but I think there might be others that are not familiar with it, so that would be good informative videoing. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be looking for someone to be an actor in that. And I know you have your screen card, so.
Thank you.
Under the city manager's portion of the agenda, the first item would communication from city manager responses to council motions and requests. Do we have anyone that'd like to be heard? Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, thank you for the, what was a pretty exhaustive report concerning the Municipal Relief Act. I think the report really goes into great detail about the things that are available, but I know Mr. Moses had a lot to do with this, but it doesn't really reach any conclusions which I take to be will be forthcoming. If there are certain things that you think we're going to be adopting in here, we'll be hearing about those in subsequent weeks.
Mr. Manager.
That's correct. We're looking at a number of them as the, as I point out in the sort of the cover memo to the, all of the communications. There are a couple, one obviously that we definitely are looking to do, and we included within the budget, well, I should say, we're definitely looking to, we included within the budget initially, and we probably will still move forward with it, is extending out the funding schedule for the pension system. The final language is a little bit different than was originally proposed, so there may be some variations in the numbers there that shouldn't be problematic for us. The other is that we're getting a lot of questions on, a number of questions on of the early retirement incentive program. We have spoken to a number of the employee groups and told them that we have, we're not generally supportive of the early retirement program. The old early retirement programs that were put in place in '93 and 2003 have not been particularly advantageous for the city and, or for most communities, because you end up filling the positions, and then you essentially add on to your pension costs, but also have additional health insurance costs that go with that for the retired employee as well as for the new employee. And so that, in response to that, this year, when the legislation, legislature acted, they actually put requirements in that positions not be refilled, that there be, and they have some percentages of how much money we're spending can be reallocated to filling positions. That becomes problematic for us in a number of departments. Even if we wanted to do the early retirement, we really couldn't because it would cut into our staffing, which is already so far down, and particularly our public safety departments. Plus, we have grant funding that requires us to keep staffing at 100% level, so that makes it even more difficult for us. Having said that, we are exploring a number of areas where it might make sense for us, and we'd be coming forward to the council with a report on that in the near future. There are a number of other areas, as Mr. Moses pointed out, that in low likelihood would not require council action, but they do change, you know, the period of time you can borrow for certain items and other changes that were made. Unfortunately, the, it was the Municipal Relief Act, but unfortunately, it doesn't really provide the real relief that we municipalities truly need. But we will come forward with additional reports, and certainly if councilors have questions on it as we move over the next few weeks and couple months, certainly we'd be happy to give more detailed responses as well.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motions, reports? Counsel Elliott.
Along that same note, as Counsel Martin was referencing, the municipal relief, have we communicated, or will you be communicating, Mr. Manager, is it Section 60 relative to reimbursement that could save, according to the report? The savings could be considerable on the school-provided transportation. Just an item of note, maybe they're not aware of this, or it might be helpful to notify them.
Right, we will, that is, as you point out, that is a school committee decision, but we will, we'll be in touch with them on that. I know that, for the most part, certainly the school committee is, the school department have been monitoring this as well, but just to make sure, we'll follow up with that.
And just one other, Section 54, it notes combining real estate bills with water sewer. Is, would there be a considerable savings there? Is there any drawback to that? Are people getting their water bill, their sewer bill, their trash bill, everything on one statement?
There's probably not likely considerable savings because we're already doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion by Counsel Martin, second by Counsel Elliott to accept the reports and place on file. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Proves the vote. Thank you. Next item from the city manager requesting approval for out-of-state travel, and we have two out-of-state travel requests. Counsel Mercy, take both at the same time. Motion by Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Mendonza. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. It's a vote. Again, roll call.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine yays.
Thank you. In city council order, pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell, Massachusetts concerning Section 266-6, thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. Whereas the city of Lowell desires to make temporary rules regulating traffic under actual conditions for a period of 60 days, whereas Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell, Section 266-6 thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations authorizes the city council to make such temporary rules for a period not to exceed 60 days. Now therefore, be it ordered, adjudged, and decreed by the city council of the city of Lowell as follows. Effective immediately for a period of 60 days thereafter, the following temporary traffic regulations shall be implemented. Section 266-55, parking for handicapped persons is hereby amended by adding the following. Mount Hope Street, 114 southwest side, beginning at a .30 feet southwest of the southeastern curb line of White Street running southeast, a distance of 20 feet along Mount Hope Street. Section 266-47, stop designated is hereby amended by adding the following. Raven Road against northbound drivers on Raven Road at River Road. West Street against northeastbound drivers on West Street at West Sixth Street. Manufacturer's Street against northbound drivers on Manufacturer's Street at Short Street. Section 266-65, loading zones is hereby amended by adding the following. Wetheren Street West beginning at a .20 feet south of southerly curb line of Merrimack Street, running southerly a distance of 40 feet. Central Street West beginning at a .28 feet north of the northerly curb line of Union Street, running northerly a distance of 20 feet between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. only. Second reading by title, in city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Lowell, Massachusetts concerning Section 266-6 thereof entitled vehicles and traffic.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Motion by Counsel Elliott to waive the full reading, seconded by Counsel Mendonza. All those in favor of waiving the full reading, signify by saying aye. It's a vote. This gets referred to a public, I'm sorry, this gets.
Refer to a public hearing.
Referred to a public hearing on September 14th. All those in favor? Indicate by saying aye. Thank you. Next in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the city of Lowell to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of an overhead system and an underground electric distribution system. Said systems are located in, through, under, over, across, and upon certain parcels of land situated on the easterly, westly side of First Street Boulevard, number 324 and 431 in said city of Lowell. Be it voted by the city council, the city of Lowell as follows that the city manager be and hereby is authorized to execute an easement from the city of Lowell to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of an overhead system and an underground electrical distribution system. Said systems are located in, through, under, over, across, and upon certain parcels of land situated on the easterly and westly side of First Street Boulevard, number 324 and number 431 in said Lowell. Said easement shall be in the form or substantial to the form attached here too. Be it further voted, the Massachusetts Electric Company shall provide the city of Lowell with as-built plants after the installation of the manhole, and be it further voted, that any cost or recording the easement and related plans shall be at the grantee's expense. Second reading by title, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the city of Lowell to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of overhead system and an underground electric distribution system. Said systems are located in, through, under, over, across, and upon certain parcels of land situated on the easterly and westly side of First Street Boulevard, number 324 and number 431 in said Lowell. What's the wish for the council? Approve. Move approved by Counsel Caulfield, seconded by Counsel Dakota. Roll call.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine yays.
Thank you. The next item also gets referred to a public hearing on September 14th. In city council vote, accepting the provision of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 23D, the Mullen Rule, which permits board members who miss a single session of an adjudicatory hearing before city boards or commissions to be able to vote on the matter. Whereas the planning board is a zyrus of accepting Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23D, and whereas the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 23D would allow a member of any municipal board, committee, or commission when holding any and all adjudicatory hearings shall be disqualified from voting in the matter solely due to that member's absence from no more than a single session of the hearing at which testimony or other evidence is received, and whereas before any such vote, the member shall certify in writing that he or she has examined all evidence received at the missed session, which evidence shall include an audio or video recording of the missed session or a transcript thereof, and whereas the written certification shall be part of the record of the hearing, and whereas the acceptance of this act does not change applicable quorum requirements, and whereas the city of Lowell by ordinance may adopt minimum additional requirements for attendance at scheduled board, committee, and commission hearings under this section. Now therefore, it is voted that the city council of the city of Lowell hereby accepts the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 23D, the Mullen Rule, which permits members of the city council and all boards, committees, or commissions when holding an adjudicatory hearing and who miss a single session of any adjudicatory hearing to be able to vote on the matter, provided he or she complied with the certification requirements of this act. Motion to refer to a public hearing by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Mendonza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. It being public hearing time, we'll move to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Public hearing is to, from Lowell General Hospital, requiring 20 additional diesel fuel storage. What I'd like to do is open the public hearing and ask for a motion to recess. It turns out that we need to notify additional butters, so this would be referred to September 14th. So motion to recess by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Murphy. All those in favor of recessing the public hearing until September 14th, please signify by saying aye. Proves the vote. Thank you. Getting back to the city manager's portion of the agenda. In city council order of taking, to take by eminent domain certain parcels of land in the city of Lowell for municipal purposes to wit for the right of way needed for the construction of a new replacement bridge over the Merrimack River and other municipal purposes. Motion to. Counsel. Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of the takings here appear to be temporary related to construction. There are three permanent takings that amount to, I think, less than 200 square feet. So this looks to be kind of a ministerial act to me, but I know there are probably other major takings, and I was curious as to where we are, how many, and I know there's one building in particular, but where, what's the timing on those? How are negotiations progressing? Where do we stand if you can say things without overplaying your hand?
Mr. George.
Ms. Biden, would you like to, I believe we're, actually, this will complete our takings, but Ms. Biden, would you like to?
Counselor, this will complete all the private parcels and excludes only Boot, Hydro, or Enel, and Commonwealth of Massachusetts parcels, DCR, UMass Lowell. So this essentially does take care of all of the private parcels that we need to accomplish.
signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote to vote. Thank you. Getting back to the city manager's portion of the agenda. In City Council order of taking, to take by eminent domain certain parcels of land in the City of Lowell for municipal purposes to wit for the right-of-way needed for the construction of a new replacement bridge over the Merrimack River and other municipal purposes. Motion by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Council Caulfield to waive the full reading. All those in favor waiving the full reading signify by saying aye. Vote to vote. In City Council order of taking, to take by eminent domain certain parcels of land for the City of Lowell for municipal purposes to wit for the right-of-way needed for the construction of a new replacement bridge over the Merrimack River and other municipal purposes.
Mr. Mayor.
What's the wish for the council? Council Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of the takings here appear to be temporary related to construction. There are three permanent takings that amount to, I think, less than two hundred square feet, so this looks to be kind of a ministerial act to me, but I know there are probably other major takings, and I was curious as to where we are, how many, and I know there's one building in particular, but what's the timing on those? Are negotiations progressing? Where do we stand if you can say things without overplaying your hand?
Mr. George.
Ms. Biden, would you like to? I believe we're, actually, this will complete our takings, but Ms. Biden, would you like to?
This will, Council, this will complete all the private parcels and excludes only Boot Hydro or Enel and Commonwealth of Massachusetts parcels, DCR, UMass Lowell. So this essentially does take care of all of the private parcels that we need to acquire for the right-of-way.
Okay, but we didn't reach agreement with everybody, though, right? I mean, there are people that still have appeal rights, or am I wrong about that?
I've met once or twice with all of these owners that are here, with the exception of Lox and Canals, and everyone seems to be in a cooperative spirit. We have one donation. There are some people that have some issues with the project and some inconveniences they see and some struggling business problems, but generally I've seen a cooperative spirit.
I don't mean these, but the...
Mr. Manager.
If I may, we came to an agreement with one property owner, and so there's one that we did take by eminent domain that we're still, that we haven't heard anything from, but we have a very good appraisal in place, and we're very confident regarding that.
The time to appeal hasn't run yet, though.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on the order of taking? Roll call.
Councilor Caulfield.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. Next item, in City Council vote approving the 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard Economic Opportunity Area. Whereas the City of Lowell desires to establish an economic opportunity area at 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard in order to make tenants in that area eligible for benefits under the State Economic Development Initiative Program, now therefore be it voted by the City Council, the City of Lowell as follows. The City Council of the City of Lowell hereby establishes the 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard together with the land, parking facilities, and other improvements on the parcel. For further definition, see Exhibit A. Be it further voted, that the city manager is hereby authorized to take whatever action is necessary and appropriate with the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council with respect to such designation as an economic opportunity area. Second reading by title. In City Council vote approving the 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard Economic Opportunity Area.
Move approval.
Move approval by Council Caulfield, seconded by Council Martin. Any questions? Council Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was very pleased to see this in the packet this week, and I know everybody's got it, read it, but just for edification of the public here, this is four hundred jobs that exist in Lowell today that will remain in Lowell. There'll be at least fifty additional jobs added. There is a tax benefit for real estate taxes for the proponent of this over the life of the agreement, amount to approximately $250,000, but in the, over that same period, the property, because of improvements and increased valuation, will generate an estimated $1 million in excess tax revenue. So, this is an improvement to a very important building in the city. It's going to add value to it, it's going to add value to the tax base, and I think more importantly retains jobs and creates some new jobs, that average in excess of $80,000 a year. So, I think this is a job well done by DPD. I think, I know this is the type of thing that goes on over there all day, and I just wish we had one every week, so thanks for the effort.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council Caulfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is what makes the business community really move forward with its innovative ways of attracting them and keeping them here, and this new business is going to occupy over a quarter of a million square feet, and it's going to invest $13 million. So, like other businesses we granted the TIFs to, this is good for the city, it's good for the business community, and I commend Manager Lynch and DPD for bringing this forward. We must provide jobs, and these are good jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Caulfield. Council Mendonza.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I mean, we were actually in danger of losing a lot of these positions, because this company had recently bought out another company and was splitting up, and they were seriously considering consolidating elsewhere. I know this because I deal with a credit union that serves them as well, and so that this TIF is going to keep those jobs here truly, and it's, one of the issues that they were having is how to fill out the space, because you don't want to be in a half-empty building, and I think this sets the stage for them to attract other businesses into that space to be there with them, and again, more jobs in Lowell, so that this is a big plus, and I certainly commend the work the DPD's done on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council Elliott.
I concur. At a time when many businesses are laying off and closing shop and moving overseas, here's one that we're retaining jobs, and as part of the TIF requirement, there is job expansion, and other TIFs sometimes come under scrutiny, but if we didn't put something like this in place and use this tool that has been given to municipalities, then, you know, there's a good chance that these jobs go away. So, to you, Mr. Manager, and DPD, this is true economic development at a period in time when, you know, the market is dropping and sometimes things aren't looking so good, but for the City of Lowell, this is good work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the kind words regarding this project. The, I think we certainly made the case over the last couple of years that we've done quite a bit here in the City of Lowell in terms of bringing businesses in and holding on to businesses. This is another example of that. This has been a, this building, this property has been a top priority for us. We've watched it very closely, working with the companies that are located there, and working hard to make sure that they stayed in the City of Lowell and they grew in the City of Lowell. And I want to thank Adam Baiki, the Assistant City Manager for Planning and Development, for his hard work and his efforts on this, and in particular, I'd like to thank Teresa Park, our Economic Development Director, who, you know, she has proven time and time again her worth, her value to the city with the small businesses, the one and two employee businesses that she works very closely with to make sure that they can succeed here in the city, but also in examples like this, we're talking, you know, five hundred jobs, five hundred very good-paying jobs that are taken by people who live here in the City of Lowell, and if they don't live in the City of Lowell, they live in the region, and they help support the overall economy of the greater Lowell area. So, again, thanks to Mr. Baiki and Teresa Park.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Caulfield.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Now that we've created the 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard Economic Opportunity Area, we have the following vote. In City Council vote approving a certified project application for Cobham Defense Electronic Systems, MACOM Incorporated, doing business as Cobham Sensor Systems, and authorizing a tax increment finance agreement with Winstonley Enterprises Incorporated. Whereas Cobham Sensor Systems has applied for designation as a certified project of the Massachusetts Economic Development Initiative Program created by Chapter 23A of the Massachusetts General Laws, and whereas Cobham Sensor Systems meets the minimum standards of the Economic Development and Center Program, and the local economic development goals and criteria established as part of the documents, creating the 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard Economic Opportunity Area. And whereas the project is located at 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard, Lowell, Massachusetts, whereas the project as proposed is consistent with and can reasonably expected to benefit significantly from inclusion in the 1001 Pawtucket Boulevard area, opportunity area, and whereas the project will not overburden existing municipal services, infrastructure, and utility servicing the Pawtucketville neighborhood, and whereas the project as described in the proposal will have a reasonable chance of increasing employment opportunities for residents of the project economic target area, thereby reducing blight, economic depression, and reliance on public assistance, and whereas the project expects to create a minimum of twenty new full-time jobs for residents of the Lowell economic target area over the next five years, and whereas the City of Lowell has agreed to offer Winstonley Enterprises Incorporated a tax increment finance agreement upon approval of the City Council, said agreement is incorporated by reference herein. Now therefore be it voted by the City Council of the City of Lowell, that the City Council of the City of Lowell approves the certified project application of Cobham Sensor Systems and forward said application for certification to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for its approval and endorsement. Be it further voted, that the City Council of the City of Lowell authorize the city manager to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with Winstonley Enterprises Incorporated and authorize its submission by the city managers to the Massachusetts Economic Development Assistance Coordinating Council. Second reading by title, in City Council vote approving a certified project application for Cobham Defense Electronic Systems, MACOM Incorporated, doing business Cobham Sensor Systems, and authorizing a tax increment finance agreement with Winstonley Enterprises Incorporated. What's the wish for the council?
Move approval.
Move approval by Council Caulfield, seconded by Council Broderick. Roll call.
Councilor Caulfield.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Next item, in City Council vote, authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Charles P. Fotopolis, trustee of Acropolis Nominee Trust, and to purchase 77 Arch Street, 14 Howard Street, 15 Howard Street, and 10 Grant Street in the City of Lowell. Whereas the City of Lowell desires to purchase properties for the purpose of city garage facility, and whereas City of Lowell issued its request for proposals to purchase said properties, and whereas Charles P. Fotopolis, trustee of Acropolis Nominee Trust, did submit a proposal to the City of Lowell, and whereas the city manager has recommended to the City Council that the city accepts said proposal and purchase from Charles P. Fotopolis, trustee of Acropolis Nominee Trust, the properties situated at 77 Arch Street, 14 Howard Street, 15 Howard Street, and 10 Grant Street in said Lowell, now therefore be it voted by a two-thirds vote of the City Council as follows, that the city manager be and he is hereby authorized in the name of the City of Lowell to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Charles P. Fotopolis, trustee of Acropolis Nominee Trust, to purchase the properties situated at 77 Arch Street, 14 Howard Street, 15 Howard Street, and 10 Grant Street in the City of Lowell for total of $449,900. Be it further voted, that the amount of $601,890 be transferred from 1701-008, sale of properties to an account to be established by the auditor for the purpose of purchasing and approving 77 Arch Street, 14 Howard Street, 15 Howard Street, and 10 Grant Street Lowell. Be it further voted, that the city manager be and is he, he is hereby authorized in the name of the City of Lowell to accept the deeds and any and all documents of conveyance related to the sale and conveyance of aforementioned properties on such terms and conditions as the city manager deems in the best interest of the city. Be it further voted, that upon conveyance, the city, the vote, deeds, and any and all related plans shall be duly recorded in the registry of deeds at the expense of grantee. Grantee shall also pay stamp tax if applicable. Second reading by title, in City Council vote, authorizing the city manager enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Charles P. Fotopolis, trustee of Acropolis Nominee Trust, to purchase 77 Arch Street, 14 Howard Street, 15 Howard Street, and 10 Grant Street in the City of Lowell. Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me preface my remarks by saying I don't care who gets it, and I have no horse in the race in that respect, but I do care as a city councillor that we vote and make the right decision, because this is something that's going to be with us for many, many, many years, and I know time is of the essence. I know that I don't want to delay further to start paying money to Marty Mann for the lease, you know, for property that's his and we're still on it, and we get to find a place to get out of there, and I know that I was instrumental in making this, you know, bringing this up like a year ago on a number of occasions. What are we going to do if we sell this off and we have our maintenance garage there? Where do we go? And I offered some suggestions of places that I thought we could look at, and one of them that you presented to us is a very one that I brought forward. Having said that, I feel I'm happy that you're doing that, but all in all, I still have questions. I'm not, and it isn't that easy for me to say, well, you know, we're going to support it, and questions I have, you just passed something around, was it Tom or Henry passed around, and that's good, we see the difference here, but it isn't enough right now, because it gives us a cost of square footage compared one to the other, and that's fine. I haven't really digested it, there's really not much information in it. I don't know what the specs are that went out, and maybe it's none of my business to know that, I don't know, but I do have questions as to, and we did receive some information, and I made sure of that because it got in our packet Friday so we could digest it. I hope my colleagues got it, because I didn't put one in mine, I just read it, and it talked about the ceiling height and the security system and the oil and water separation and the garage door height and the fire suspension system, and did we meet exterior requirements? The no exterior fence? What is the cost to renovate to meet specifications? I know there are nine-foot-high bay doors here, when we probably need fourteen or twelve or fourteen or a combination of both, I don't know. I think we probably do. I'm not the one that's going to be the employee that's going to work there, I don't know if we can make that fit. I know that we have more paperwork, a new vote that didn't come in our packet but remained on our desk, where we are including property as not only 77 Arch Street but 14 Howard Street, 15 Howard Street, 10 Grant Street. That didn't come in our original packet on Friday, so I'm asking, is the $449,000, these buildings are a part of it as well? I don't know that answer. I don't know, how does, is this to be acquired by the city in that money so that we can make the turn to get in there? I mean, there's a lot of questions that I have. How much, and this is the number one problem, concern, how much are we going to spend to refurbish this place to meet what we need? So I'm not trying to say, you know, we're making a mistake, we should have picked the other one, da-da-da-da. I don't know, maybe it's cheaper in the long run to retrofit it and have it our, you know, the way we want it, and it's in a good location. I don't know what it is, but I want to be able to make a better judgment as to all the questions that I have raised right now and say that in the long run we'll be spending... I think I asked you that, Mr. Manager, you said $200,000 as an estimate. I don't know that that's, I think if you have to raise the bays and make it from a nine-foot to a fourteen-foot and take the whole roof off and add it up, I think that alone would probably be $200,000. So I don't know if this is the best fit for all those years down the road. I don't know, Mr. Manager, and so, I mean, maybe my colleagues are ready to vote tonight. I'm not ready to vote tonight. I can't make a knowledgeable determination, and after I had said that, what did we do with the $800,000 that we took in? Where did that go? Did, what did we do with the?
We actually have not received $800,000. So far, we've received $550,000. That's in the account that's being used to deal with these issues. The remaining $250,000, if we get that $250,000, will go to, into that account as well, into the sale of land.
What do you mean if we get it?
Under the agreement with the university, we were supposed to be out of this property back in, I believe it was May, and I've had discussions with the chancellor asking that we be allowed to stay for a bit longer. I committed to the chancellor that we would be out of there before their hockey season starts, so their hockey season starts in October. Right now, under the purchase and sale agreement that was delivered to the council back in last year, the agreement was that if we were not out, that there is a, essentially a lease cost per month, I can't recall now whether it's per day or per month, for occupying that facility. So there's a penalty to us, so that could be conceivably be eaten up, that $250,000 could be eaten up if we're not out of that facility.
But the remainder would go to this issue.
Five hundred and fifty that's already on hand in the sale of properties is in this There was some, there was some confusion. The property is listed on, as the building itself that we're purchasing is Seventy Seven Arch Street. But all of the properties that are owned by Mr. Fotopolis that he was submitting to us for our purchase, for this purpose, are the adjacent properties. So that, and it isn't just the building itself, it's the parking lots that go with it that he was looking to sell to us for four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
So am I led to believe that like Fifteen Howard Street, there's not a house there?
It's not.
It's just the land.
That's correct.
Are we still going to be able to make the turns with the flatbeds and the, you know? I don't know. I'm relying on your expertise, and it's probably none of my business to say, well, you should have chose this one over this one. I don't really care.
It's a good, it's a good, these are good, very good questions, Councilor, and they're questions that we ourselves are concerned with, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
To address, I think the questions you raised are very good ones. Certainly, the, you know, where's the money? Where did it go? Anytime you sell properties, it goes into the sale of properties account, and that's what we'd be using to transfer out to do this. And then when that two fifty comes in, as I said, hopefully, then we'll replenish that account with that money. In terms of the, sort of, if I could step back in the history of this, our intention was to, initially was to lease a property. And we put it out to bid, and I believe we received one, two proposals, both of these proposals. And they both came in at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. The one that met the, see, when you're leasing a property, you spec it out. You submit the specifications that they have to meet exactly, because we can't make improvements to a property we don't own if we're just leasing it. So we said specifically, we want this height of door. We want this type of, these type, this number of bays we want, you know, we ran the gamut. And the bid that we received was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which meant over three years we'd be spending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I felt that that was too high. I felt that, I know that there are other properties in the city that I spoke to, business people that I spoke to that operate service stations or car repair facilities that are paying half of that for much more desirable pieces of property in the city. So I felt that we were, very frankly, we were being taken advantage of. And, which is that people's right certainly to put a proposal in. But it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So we began exploring different city-owned properties in which we could build the facility, feeling that we could get a contractor in to pour a slab, and we could erect a prefab building on top of that, a metal building on top of that. But of course, as I think the whole council knows, it is very difficult to find land here in the city, particularly city-owned land. We did find a spot that did work, that did have access, and that was at the water plant. And it was our intention to move forward and erect that there. We were having some issues with timing that, in order to construct that, it was going to take some time. But we were going to try to fast-track it and hopefully be into it by November, which was problematic again with the university, but we were moving forward on that. But once we started looking at all of the real construction costs that went with that, the price per square foot was about a hundred dollars a square foot, because it was in a floodplain, so we had to raise the land up to get it out of the floodplain in order to build that building. So that didn't make sense to us. So that was going to end up spending about a million, a million-two. So we tried again to go out to bid, this time with the understanding that we wouldn't lease, that we would in fact buy. That, in fact, it was the owner of the second of the higher bidder here that contacted us and indicated an interest in selling the property to us. So we put it out to bid. When you're buying property, you don't actually spec it out. Exactly, you spec it out based on desired, and you can either be, meet the requirement or meet the request. And so you're advantageous, or highly advantageous, advantageous, or not advantageous. And the, so we got these two proposals. And when we looked at them, it was clear that one was highly advantageous, but it was, had a cost of one million ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The other property, which was, did not, was not advantageous, highly advantageous, was four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. However, if we were to go in and make the necessary improvements, which you have outlined here in the sheet that I gave you, the total cost, based on the work, the estimates that Mr. Blazon has received, is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's forty thousand dollars for a fire suppression system, thirty thousand dollars to actually punch a hole in the side of the building that will go into the basement, fifty thousand dollars to increase the roof height on a portion of the building to get the larger pieces of police equipment in there. Most of, you know, let's remember that this facility was a service station, was a car repair facility in the private sector for a number of years. So clearly, you can get a car in. And in fact, we did an experiment, and you can actually get a van or a pickup truck in. But the police requested that it be a little bit higher, so we've priced out to put a, increase a couple of the bays to get that equipment in. That costs fifty thousand. The security system will cost ten thousand, because security is important to us. The oil separation system would be seventy-five hundred. Wiring upgrades, five thousand. A perimeter fence, five thousand. Electrifying the overhead doors would be five thousand. Segregating three bays would be five thousand. A cement apron, apron repair would be five thousand. Basement cleanout is five thousand, and cleaning out the building for everything that's there is twenty-five hundred. We also anticipate, we have a contingency built in there of sixty-one thousand, ten percent, which is pretty standard, giving us a total cost of six hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, or roughly four hundred, over five hundred thousand dollars less than if we just bought the property at Meadowcroft. I would also, so the cost per square foot is fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents per square foot versus eighty-six dollars and sixteen per square foot at the Meadowcroft Street property. I also think that in terms of proximity to the downtown, proximity to the center of the city, the Arch Street is more desirable. And I think it's an area of the city that clearly is going through revitalization, is adjacent to the Hamilton Canal Project, just on the other side of the Lord Overpass. At the same time, it's also in an area that, the Lower Highlands neighborhood, that needs a greater police presence. And I think that having the police facility there will be an advantage to that neighborhood, so.
You know that I didn't have this Friday, right?
I do know. It's because you asked, it's because you asked for it that I, we put it together.
See, I always want to make a vote that I can justify. And if you tell me that this is what you're doing, then I can understand that. But we didn't have any of this information.
I understand that, and I.
And I had these questions. Thank you for the report.
But thank you, thank you for calling me on Friday and asking me the questions.
Councilor Caulfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very familiar with this building. At one time, it was the Ace Muffler, probably going back forty or fifty years. Ace Muffler was right downtown. When I was a kid, that's where I bought my Hollywood mufflers. But then they moved to this elaborate building on Arch Street. And I don't want to be a thorn in your side, Mr. Manager. I know you have a tough decision to make here. But Lieutenant Crowley and Cooley Supercracus, Cracus, they went out and visited the sites under your direction. And they visited this site last fall, and they came back with a negative report. And they came back with another negative report. And, you know, sometimes you're penny wise and pound foolish. Looking at the building on Meadowcroft Street, looks like a fairly new building. It would suit our needs. I don't even know who owns it. I don't have a horse in the race or anything like that. But there's so much work to be done at this building. The ceiling height and the entire garage area is too low for the large-capacity lifts we have and require. They will not fit and could not be used at this location. Due to the slow ceiling height, we could not service any of our patrol wagons, traffic vans, pickup trucks, large SUVs, dive team vans, or dive team minibus. Getting the mobile command van inside is also out of the question. All these vehicles would require routine and advanced maintenance completed at a different location. And I can go on and on. My colleagues have read this letter, and it's totally negative. It's, they don't recommend that we go there. So I have to, I have to put some faith in someone. So reading when I am, I can't support this, and I won't, so.
Manager Lynch.
Councilor, if I could, if I could respond. Clearly, you know, anytime we buy a facility, buy a piece of equipment, you know, we bought a, we bought a piece of fire apparatus last year that, you know, the fire chief wanted a particular type of equipment, and we, we held his feet to the fire, and we moved forward with portions of it. We didn't do other portions of it. Certainly, every, every department wants, if you will, the Cadillac. And at times, we can't afford the Cadillac. And in this particular case, if this was a matter of a hundred thousand dollars or a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe, you'd say, well, maybe we should bite the bullet and do it. This is almost half a million dollars difference. And given the financial needs of the city, that half a million dollars could go a long way towards, I've been meeting regularly with the Public Works Department and the terrible condition of our equipment in Public Works, that half a million dollars could go a long way towards putting some additional snowfighting equipment on the street this winter. And I think that would make far more sense for the city than to pay for a building that is a wonderful building, certainly on Meadowcroft, but it isn't, it isn't absolutely necessary for our needs.
Mr. Manager, we're going to, the cost of this building is four hundred and forty-nine thousand?
That's correct.
And you're going to invest almost two hundred thousand?
Hundred, a hundred and seventy thousand, we estimate.
And I personally think it's going to be a lot more than that. And you can go into a building that's ready to just move in and have them perform all their duties. Sometimes, you know, you can't compare the building on Meadowcroft Street with this building. You have to admit that. And there's plenty of parking at the other building, the other site, and there's plenty of bays. And I, I'm just being upfront and honest with you. I just, I don't, I don't like this at all.
Councilor Mendonza.
Yes, I was a little puzzled too going through our packet, because I saw the vote on the agenda, but there was no vote document until today. And there was this report in the packet from Lieutenant Crowley that listed all of these requirements that weren't met. And so I was a little bit concerned about where this was going. And then, of course, today we get the property cost comparison, and now I can see where some of this is going now. And I'll just correct the manager that it's four hundred thousand, not five hundred. But still, and I guess I could, he somewhat answered this already, but if I could, through the mayor, ask the city managers, I assume you've seen the report from Lieutenant Crowley? Or do you have it?
Yes, I have seen the report.
So in your opinion, with these extra work, this extra hundred and seventy thousand plus the sixty-one, almost sixty-two thousand contingency, will that bring it up to meet the requirements in our original proposal?
Yes, it will.
And, I mean, I still can't ignore the fact that although the other one may meet it as-is, although that's not necessarily to be assumed here, that with the purchase price of these properties and the work that is estimated here to be done, we're still coming in four hundred thousand dollars under the other property. And I think, as you said, that's hard to ignore that amount. It also seems that the proposal came in probably a little higher for this market than it should have been, as I see that the, on this evening's report, you show the purchase price as a percentage of assessed, where one is asking a hundred and sixty-two percent of assessed, and the other one's asking for a hundred and thirteen. I mean, a lot of the difference is probably there as well. So I came into this meeting thinking that we needed a lot more information on what was going on here. I now see what you've provided this evening answers a lot of my questions. Finally, one question is, we're concerned about the timeline. And so I would be concerned about not only the estimate of the cost of this work, but what's the estimate of the time for this work to be done and so that we can move? Because it, you know, two months or less than two months is not a lot of time to get all this done.
I'll throw the mayor to the manager.
If I, if I may, one, one bit of information I would like to put out is that the evaluation committee, the people who were involved in this, are beyond just the two employees of the Police Department. We also included, obviously, our purchasing procurement director, as well as Mr. Blazon from DPW. The internal staff of the manager's office all played a role in assessing all of these properties and the decisions. So it isn't just, we don't still rely on the department. We rely upon others outside the department. If I could, either to Mr. Vaughn or Mr. Blazon, the time necessary to, you know, we can move in almost immediately. The question is, we need to get the, I'd say the largest issue right now for us is the fence and the security system, and we can move quickly to have those put in place. But do you have any ideas of how long it would take to do some of the other work? Either Dave or Mike?
Based on some of the cost estimates, they would be public bid processes that we would have to go out and advertise and secure contractors through the bid process. But some of the work can be done in-house of the upgrades of the bathrooms, the fencing. We have a state contractor on board that we can just, you know, bring him right on board right away. The facility pretty much is in moving condition. Does it acclimate itself towards all of Cooley's needs? Absolutely not. But until we can get that roof up there, you know, he may have to, you know, make some adjustments until then. But the opinion was, this facility is, you know, moving condition until what time we can, you know, suit Cooley's needs.
Okay, that, the fact that we can use it while we upgrade it, I think, makes a difference as well. Because again, if the sooner we can get out of the, next to the arena, I think, then we get to get better piece of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With this new information, I think I can support this now where I wasn't going to before. Thank you.
Councilor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this. Anytime we can save four hundred thousand and maybe sixty-one, sixty-two thousand in a contingency, it's almost a no-brainer. I agree, Mr. Mayor, we can't afford the Cadillac. We've got to go for the Ford or for, you know, some other version. Knowing we have so many other needs, knowing we don't have the money available. Maybe it's not going to meet every single need, but I think, number one, we run the risk of losing two hundred and fifty thousand forfeiting from the lease. You know, no disrespect for Councilman Mann, for Chancellor Mann, but I think we got to prepare ourselves and not put ourselves in that position. He's running his institution, we have to run ours. So I think the other thing, you know, in terms of getting ready, we just received the municipal relief report from you. One of the provisions is that anything under ten thousand, we don't have to go out for a formal bid. We just have to get bid. So that's good news that we can try to meet these needs in a timely manner. So I, you know, the difference, I agree, Mr. Manager. If it was just, and not to say a hundred thousand's not a lot of money, but there's a substantial difference here. And I'm going to support it, and I think we need to move in a timely manner if we're, if we want to get out from where we are and get this rolling, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Broderick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had, I guess, a couple of questions is, and maybe to you, Mr. Manager. I think these have been asked, but I want to ask them maybe a little bit more direct. How sure are we on these estimates with the contingency? I mean, we're doing this with the understanding that we're going to save four hundred thousand, get, you know, not the Cadillac. And I think that I might, I'm okay with that based upon the savings, but, you know, I would hate to see this come back in at seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand, and now approach to where it may, might not have been a wise choice, because I assume this is a facility that we're going to keep and use for many years to come. So it's not a short-term decision here that, you know, I just would like to know if these estimates are fairly certain. I know that things change on a daily, weekly basis, materials and so on. But I, you know, I know that we have people that have been doing this a long time, and this, I assume, are fairly certain numbers?
Yes, we, obviously, they're not absolute numbers. Yes, we, obviously, they're not absolute numbers that require us a bidding, but they're numbers that, a number of this work, quite a bit of this work, you know, we're, we're used to doing ourselves and we have confidence in these, in these numbers.
Okay. And one other question, we had two bids for the lease and then we had two bids again for the sale. I assume we sent out the same requests, the same information. I know they're not requirements if we're selling, but they're requirements if we're leasing, but we use the same basically requirements, the same list?
That's correct.
Would we have gotten potentially more responses if we had, I don't know if there's a proper way to put it, but lowered our requirements to meet what we're actually gonna get on Arch Street? You follow me? In other words, if we hadn't, if, are there people out there who thought that these were requirements when they weren't and we might have gotten some additional responses?
Well, again, under the purchase, you, you, I suppose they may have come in with, there may have been others out there that might have said, "Well, I'm..." Will Mr. Vaughn wanna jump in on this one?
Hi. For the lease, we did an invitation for bids, so we set what the terms are and they have to meet it. On the purchase, we did an RFP, which is Request for Proposals, and we had exactly, as the manager was talking about, highly advantageous, advantageous. So, there was wiggle room and everything, but that meant they knew there was a cost involved. If they didn't have a fence up, they knew that the cost of the fence would be added to their proposal.
Okay, so, it wasn't exclusionary in any way, then?
What would have been exclusionary was the fact that we were asking for roughly twelve thousand square feet in so many bays and that, and all these facilities met that.
Okay. I guess, thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. That's what I was wondering if, and again, I know we're up against a time, time issue here and potentially two hundred and fifty thousand dollars around the corner here. And, you know, I, I agree, we, we can afford what we can afford and if, if, if this is gonna suit our needs, which we're told it will, then, you know, I can support that with the understanding that, you know, times are, times are difficult and we can, you know, if we can, if this will do the job, then I think we should save the money. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really wanna beat a dead horse about this letter, but mine was not in the packet, so I'm just taking a look at it now. And there's just a couple of things jumped out at me. It listed the building is not insulated. I don't see installation or bathrooms, but I know that that was just discussed. And I don't see the DEP twenty-one E soil test on here. So, have we addressed, I'm sorry, insulation, other? No.
Right. If you, if you could...
So, it wasn't a requirement, but wouldn't the employees need to be, have an insulated working environment?
It wasn't in the bid package as a requirement. I've certainly read Cooley and Tim had written, but not everything was exactly in the bid package that they were stating. So, we didn't have that as a requirement in there.
I'm just actually speaking to the cost of upgrading the building. Because I don't see that as a cost that's listed here.
It's not in there as a cost to insulate the building.
Well, it's a cinder block, cement building, so I'd have to defer. That's why Dave's here.
Most garages are not an insulated facility. You have the garage doors, they open up, they lose all the heat immediately. So, they're all based on a quick recovery type system, like a Modine heater and that sort. And it wouldn't be, as I said, because it's open to all different environments.
Okay, fair enough. And the bathrooms, I know you just mentioned the bathrooms. And then, what about this soil contamination, is that something we have to address?
Mr. Bakie has done some research on that as well in terms of any reports that are on file. We took a look at all of the addresses in question in both properties and there are no, no filings with the DEP about contamination in any of these properties. Obviously, you work with an urban site, it's always possible that if you do start digging and testing, you may find something. But these are fully paved sites, so if we don't violate that, no, there is no real pathway for any kind of hazard if, if indeed something even exists. And again, nothing has been reported on any of the, either of these sites in the past.
Okay, thank you. And I would, I would just like to echo what Counsel Mercier said. This information, I didn't receive the letter and we obviously got this today. And with the information about losing the two hundred and fifty thousand potentially made, would have made this an easier sell for, for most of us, I think.
And if I may, I was under the impression that the vote was in your packets and I was not aware that the letter was. That was, that letter was forwarded on to the chief and forwarded, provided to the chief and then forwarded on to me. And I'm not sure, I, I wasn't aware that it even went out in the packet. So, I can see where there was confusion.
And, and the mayor does not have the letter. Just for information, we don't have, I don't have it. Counsel Caulfield?
Oh, now I know how it got there. Counsel...
Thank you.
I gave the, at the request, I gave all those nine, well, eight. I kept mine, gave them to the city clerk. And that's how they get in there, I guess. But I'm sorry, I...
If I could ask, who, who requested that you give, you do that?
Timmy Crowley.
To me, that's a violation of Plan E charter. Counsel Mercier, that's a violation.
Well, he wanted to...
Well, I'm happy we have that report.
Well, he wanted to...
Well, it's fine, but it's still a violation, Counsel Caulfield.
Well, let me just say that he wanted to put them on the desk before the city council meeting.
Well, he should have gone through the proper channels.
Well, that's not proper, because I wouldn't have supported it anyway. We're talking about delay. Are we gonna reach a decision or are we gonna play games and put it on the desk?
I'm not playing games, I'm just saying that that's not the proper channel. Counsel Caulfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't know, I didn't hear, have we done a twenty-one E test on the property?
No, Mr. Bakie just re, addressed that issue. Twenty-one E is not necessary on either one of these properties. There have been no reports of any contamination at either of the properties and they're both paved surfaces that, and we have no plans to dig into this, so it wouldn't trigger a twenty-one E.
Not only did they install mufflers, but they changed the oil on thousands of cars. So, it's, I think it's very important that you have a twenty-one E test. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Blazon a question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Blazon? This is a twelve thousand square foot building. Cinder blocks.
Yes, sir.
How high are you gonna raise the roof?
As high as necessary for the lift to carry whatever the, the highest piece of equipment is.
And you're gonna remove the present roof?
Not the entire roof.
Not the entire roof. But you're gonna raise a portion of the roof?
That's correct.
And you're gonna do all that for fifty thousand dollars?
We have a, a local engineering company that has very reputable, reputation within the city. There's, has just completed one of the most magnificent buildings in the city. He personally came out on his own time, donated his time and gave us a very good estimate of what that cost would be.
Okay.
Any further, Counsel Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I, I did get a vote in the packet. There was a new vote tonight, just to correct the property addresses, but the old vote had the same price. I get the letter too, so I guess I had the most information.
You had more than me.
The fewest questions, but the most information. So, but to me, this begs the question, this Meadowcroft Street site was in, actually in the budget a few years ago as a potential lease site for the maintenance of fire department equipment. Or if not this site, a site close by to it. So, and I know this is a police facility primarily, but in my mind, my questions are, what do we do for the other city vehicles? Do we have a problem of capacity? I mean, it, it doesn't seem to me to make a whole lot of sense that we have one facility to maintain police vehicles, another one to, you know, maintain fire trucks, another one to maintain other DPW equipment. How does all that women, and so, there's separate personnel in each department to do all this? I mean, is, is there any opportunity to consolidate some of these? Has that been explored?
Yes, in fact, the facility we were looking to build over on the water site, we were looking to do something along those lines. The police, the police have concerns, I will tell you, the police have concerns about having other employees working near police vehicles, more importantly, near vehicles that are part of an ongoing investigation. So, that was something we wrestled with back and forth. We think that there's a way around that. Long-term goal, I do have a long-term goal here of having all of our maintenance, fleet maintenance done in one location. This building will not do that. The Meadowcroft Road building will not do that. The fire equipment right now is maintained in the fire department right out back here. The DPW equipment is maintained out at the, the DPW facility on Middlesex Street. Ultimately, that facility on Middlesex Street will probably need to be addressed. I mean, again, these, the city has a number of long-term needs that, but that clearly is one of our goals, is to move to a, a central facility that does all of our fleet maintenance. I will say that it's rare. Most communities do have separate and I think it's something we need to get beyond. I, I think this property too, if I may, I indicated that it's right, it's adjacent to the Hamilton Canal site. Long-term, I think that there's a, this, the value of this particular property will go up more than other pieces of property in the city, because of its being so close to the, to the Hamilton Canal property. And so, I think that, you know, when we look, I think it was Counselor Caulfield who indicated that, you know, we're gonna be here for a very, very long time. I don't know if we're gonna be here for a very, very long time. I think we're gonna be here for a number of years at this site. And, but I think that down the road, there may be a more advantageous use of this property and the city will be in a good position to, to have control of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Malanzo?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Broderick?
Yes.
Nine Yates. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, in city council vote. In city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the City of Lowell to Mass, Massachusetts Electric for the installation of an underground electric distribution system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and under, upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Be it voted by the city council, the City of Lowell as follows, that the city manager be and he is hereby authorized to execute an easement from the City of Lowell to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of an underground electric distribution system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Said easement shall be in the form or substantially the form attached here too. The exact location of said facility shall require written approval of the Lowell City engineer prior to installation and erection. Be it further voted, that any cost of recording the easement and related plans shall be at the grantee's expense. Second reading by title, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the City of Lowell to Massachusetts Electric Company for the installation of an underground electrical distribution system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. What's the wish of the council? Overproven by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Broderick. Roll call. Counsel Caulfield?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mendoza?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Malanzo?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Broderick?
Yes.
Nine Yates. In city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the City of Lowell to Colonial Gas Company for the installation of an underground system and system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Be it voted by the city council, the City of Lowell as follows, that the city manager be and hereby is authorized to execute an easement from the City of Lowell to Colonial Gas Company for the installation of an underground system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Said easement shall be in the form or substantially the form attached here too. The exact location of said facility shall require written approval of the Lowell City engineer prior to the installation and erection. Be it further voted, that any cost of recording the easement and related plans shall be at the grantee's expense. Second reading by title, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement from the City of Lowell to Colonial Gas Company for the installation of an underground system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. What's the wish of the council? Overproven. Overproven by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Dakota. If I could, I just have a question from the chair, if my colleagues don't mind. I thought Colonial Gas Company no longer existed. Yeah, coming back.
Yeah, that was, the, the information that we had gotten from Division of Planning and Development, which presumably came from them, indicated Colonial Gas. I had the same reaction when I was drawing these up.
I just don't know if it should say Colonial Gas, successors in our signs, because Colonial Gas does not exist.
The...
National Grid, correct.
They are all subsidiaries of National Grid and I believe National Grid retains the old names of some of them to distinguish this, the portions of their company. Obviously, we'll work closely with the law department, their attorneys, on exactly the proper nomenclature for who should receive the easement.
Okay, thank you.
Again, the, the documents that, that came from them had, had indicated that that's who the, the license agreement would, what the easement rather would go to.
Okay.
But I can always double check and that would be a non-substantive change anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call. Counsel Caulfield? Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mendoza?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Malanzo?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Broderick?
Yes.
Nine Yates. Thank you. In city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary easement from the City of Lowell to Colonial Gas Company for the installation of an underground system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Be it voted, the city council, the City of Lowell as follows, that the city manager be and hereby is authorized to execute a temporary easement from the City of Lowell to Colonial Gas Company for the installation of an underground system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated in Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Said easement shall be in the form or substantially the form attached here too. The exact location of said facility shall require written approval of the Lowell City engineer prior to installation and erection. Be it further voted, that any cost of recording the easement and related plans shall be at the grantee's expense. Second reading by title, in city council vote, authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary easement from the City of Lowell to Colonial Gas Company for the installation of an underground system. Said system is located in, through, under, over, across and upon certain parcels of land situated on Trolley Way, Broadway Street in said Lowell and will fully set forth in Exhibit A. Over...
I'm just curious to know where Trolley Way is. Where, where was that? What was it before that was changed to Trolley Way? I, I don't know where it is.
It's actually not, not anything yet. It is a portion of one of the rights of way that's been laid out for the Hamilton Canal District. And because that particular segment will only carry the trolley, pedestrians and the utilities under the ground, they're referring to it on a temporary basis as Trolley Way or the Trolley Way. There, it has not yet been named, so there's some naming opportunities still out there in the Hamilton Canal District.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Mendoza, seconded by Counsel Caulfield. Roll call. Counsel Caulfield?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mendoza?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine Ys.
Thank you. The last item under city manager appointment, Amy Stevens to Lowell Historic Board. Dear Mayor Milonazo, member of the city council pursuant to the authority vested in me as city manager under Section 5A of Chapter 566 of the Acts of 1983, I have appointed the following person to the Lowell Historic Board, Amy M. Stevens, 52 Lawrence Drive, Lowell, 01854, to fill the unexpired term of Taya Dixon-Malane for a term expiring February 28th, 2011. Under the above referenced statute, confirmation by the city council is required for this appointment and hereby requested. I would be happy to answer any inquiries that you may have concerning this appointment. Very truly yours, Bernard F. Lynch, City Manager. Motion to approve the appointment by Council Mendoza, seconded by Council Mercia. Roll call.
Councilor Caulfield.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Broderick.
Yes.
Nine Ys.
Under reports, subcommittee reports, Council Caulfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Council Frankie Dakota, and Council Rodney Elliott, and myself convened a meeting this evening at 5:00 PM for the Public Safety Subcommittee pertaining to vicious dogs. In attendance was Solicitor David Fenton, Counselors Patrick Murphy, Police Officer Brian Kenny, Police Chief Ken LaValle, Animal Officer Everett Potter, Mayor James Milonazo, Council Rita Mercia, the Animal Advisory Committee, Michael Kiley, representing the MSPCA, Henry Marshand, Council Joe Mendoza, and we had residents who came to the podium who testified about pit bulls. And one of the alarming testimonies this evening was from Linda Morissette, who was walking her dog on Barnham Avenue, a small little terrier, and a car was passing by, and she claims that the pit bull in the car jumped out of the car and went to attack her dog. And the gentleman indicated to Mrs. Morissette that it's a good thing your dog was a female dog, because if it was a male dog, the pit bull would have probably mauled it to death. Also, Bill Daly from Floyd Street is butting law Judge Tibbet. They were walking on Floyd Street, the Backshuttle Street neighborhood, months and months and months ago, and a neighbor's pit bull not only attacked them, but attacked the dog that they had in their arms, and it cost Mr. Daly $1,000 for the veterinarian bills. I'll read this report, Mr. Mayor, that the police chief gave me earlier, gave everyone else, and it's from Kira Sergeant Lombard from Megan Fiera, and Chief LaValle gave the committee this information. This information was compiled by pulling all the calls from January 1st, 2009, August 23rd to 2010, for medical dog bites. From there, I looked at each call that generated a report, read that report, and determined the breed of dog that was involved. The following are the results. There were a total of 63 calls for a dog bite, 48 of which resulted in the case number being generated, and 47 in a report being written. Of those 63 calls, 31% of them were listed as pit bulls as the offending dog. 54% or 26 of the calls had another breed listed as the offending dog, and 15%, which is a total of seven, did not list the offending breed. Other breeds involved in these incidents included a boxer, a bulldog, Chihuahua, a chow, a cockapoo, a German shepherd, a husky, Labrador master mix, a mutt, two rottweilers, a Russell mix, a terrier, and a dashung. Five of these did not list a specific breed, there's this one small white dog, but that was a report from Chief LaValle. Councilor Elliott presented a motion, and presently, the animal control officer is located at the DPW. And Chief LaValle indicated, years and years ago, the animal control officer was under the jurisdiction of the police department. So the motion that Council Elliott brought forward, and it was unanimously supported, a recommendation to restructure the animal control office through the police department. And also, Mr. Mayor, if you could bring forward, we didn't have time to discuss it tonight, the fines that have been levied and the fines that haven't. And Everett Potter indicated there were 300 citations issued last year, 300. Michael Kiley, he brought forward, in many instances, when a resident has a dog that's retained, and it's kept in a kennel, and the cost could be as much as $1,000, the owner of that dog has no love for the dog, there's no feeling for the dog. They just let the dog go, they just go out and get another dog, and that's the problem. And I was speaking to a high-ranking officer in the police department, and, you know, the editorial in Lowell Sun indicated that it's not the animal, it's the irresponsible owner, and that's true. But if you put an irresponsible owner and a pit bull together, you are looking for problems. So it's an issue that this subcommittee is going to roll up its sleeves, dig into it, and come up with, hopefully, some solution, bring it forward to the council. We do have a copy of the ordinance from Boston, and we do have the draft of an ordinance that they're going to draft as well in Worcester, so we're going to take a look at those as well. Mr. Kiley indicated that a muzzle is ineffective, and my answer to that is, a muzzle is effective because that animal can't bite anyone, and the muzzles are made for a reason. So that's the report. If my colleagues like to add to that, I welcome that.
Council Elliot.
Council Caulfield gave a very good report. I just wanted to add a couple, because it was a long meeting, but it was a productive meeting. Two other items, if we could just include as part of the motion, was to look at increasing the fines for violations, and the other aspect was to look at, how can we collect those fines? What can, you know, is there a way to lean either property or, you know, other methods of collecting? Because the clerk indicated that he sends out letters to collect these fines, and most of the time, they go uncollected. So I think that's really the teeth that we need to sink into an ordinance or to look into. I did also ask the solicitor, is it possible to pursue this in a criminal manner if there are violations? And he indicated that there were, or there might be, but that's something else we need to look into. And I think Council Rita Mercia brought up the point that, you know, if we can, you know, they can't ignore a warrant, and if we can somehow attach warrant to some of these violations, of course, if they're egregious, then that might be something to look into. So, you know, again, it was a good meeting. It's a significant problem in the city, and we've all heard it, and we've all seen the reports, and it's not just strictly isolated to pit bulls. One other item of discussion was the breeding problem, illegal breeding problem that's taking place throughout the city, and that's something, looking at, the Animal Advisory Committee is looking into a spay-neuter program with some financial support from MSPCA. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate what I think is important, not because I'm saying it, mind you, but because I think it is important, that enforcement is crucial, enforcement. Enforcement equals a fine, and you can raise that fine triple, quadruple, but if the people that are getting this fine are not going to pay it and thumb our nose up at us, then we've defeated ourself. So what I want to say with that is, for example, if you go out to Andover, and believe me, I'm coming to the purpose, you go out to Andover, I'm on the sidewalk, I'm ready to cross the street, my God, the car's stopped to a halt, I said, who's here? But anyways, there's a thing with respect to people crossing the street. Having said that, people know that you have to stop there, and it's amazing, it's like being in a different area. Now, many years ago, we had such a thing that people were issued to go to court, they didn't bother going. A warrant was issued, they couldn't have cared less. The talk in the city then was, oh, well, you know what, so what that you got a warrant, so what you didn't show up at court, they're not going to enforce it anyway. Now we have the Sheriff's Department with the superintendent, and they issued a warrant apprehension unit, and now people know that if you have to go to court, you're going to go, because if you get a warrant, you're going to have to show up, because they're going to come and get you. I think that there's a message that we should send out there as a council, as a city, that, gee, I want to get a dog, but if I don't follow the law and do the right thing, like keeping my dog on a leash, they're going to issue me the fine, but better than that, they're going to come and get me if I just thumb my nose up and don't pay. So I think that's the issue, that we want to send that message, just like in Andover. People have the right of way, you better stop that car. People in Lowell that have a dog better take the law, you know, obey the law, or if you don't, you just better know that you're going to be responsible for that dog. I mean, that's, I think, is important, because I love animals, and I know that when you talk about muzzles, that's not the answer, because the person that has that vicious dog isn't going to put that muzzle on the dog while he's roaming the streets and not supposed to be there, so that's my.
Thank you. Council Mendoza.
I've been following this closely and attending the meetings as many as I can, and what I keep hearing over and over again is this is an enforcement issue. We already have a lot of these ordinances on the books, they need to be enforced. And then beyond that, even when they give out the citations, it's hard to collect on the fines, they're just being ignored. And so beyond that, we need another mechanism, that if somebody's ignoring these fines, we need another way to force them to come to terms with what they've done, and pay up, and actually hurt them in the pocketbook, I think is what we're seeing. And I think this is more in the purview of the administration, to come up with something. I know there's a recommendation to reorganize where the dog ordinance is enforced, whether it's DPD, or rather, DPW, or the police department. It makes sense to me to move it to an enforcement agency, and then really look at the fines and the structure of the fines and the fees that we have. Clearly, we're being told that pit bulls are not innately vicious. They're being trained to be vicious, or because of inbreeding, they're becoming unpredictable and vicious in that way. And so the other thing that I asked about at the subcommittee meeting was, can we look at the fees for licensing dogs? And maybe unneuter dogs, we should have a higher fee, because we do not want a lot of, well, basically improper breeding going on in the city. And I'm not sure why people want these dogs over another breed, but somehow, they become, I don't know if the proper word is popular, but so many people want them, that now you got everybody breeding them just to fill the need, and they actually don't hold them at a very high value, because when we capture them and put them in the pound, they just as soon get another one and let that one be euthanized. And that's part of the problem, they're throwaway dogs in the sense, I feel bad. I have a big dog, anyone comes to my door will think I have a vicious dog. At 139 pounds, I think he'll keep anyone out of the house, but, again, with family members, he's fine, you know, he wouldn't hurt anyone. In any case, I see that as the big issue, is that somehow we need to turn this over, I think, to the city management administration for the enforcement piece, and then look at what we need to do, and let the Public Safety Subcommittee continue to work on any tweaks to the ordinances, or fines, or fees that need to be done. But clearly, this is getting out of hand, and we need to show that we're going to have teeth in this, and we're going to start taking people to task, and I think, once we start to do that, we find a way to do that, a lot of these problems will start to go away, because people are going to be more careful with what they do with their pets.
Thank you. Any other comments, except the report as a report of progress by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Murphy? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? Under petitions, a petition from the Pawaw Oak Protectors requests to address the city council on the Pawaw Oak Clark Road issue. I know that we have George Kumenzalis registered to speak. I also, for information to my colleagues, I did receive a letter from Congresswoman Nikki Sangus, asking us to support the efforts of the Pawaw Oak Protectors of Lowell, so I'm going to turn this letter over to the city clerk for public record. Mr. Kumenzalis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is George Kumenzalis, I live at 241 Remington Street in Lowell, and I would personally like to thank the mayor and each and every one of the members of the Lowell City Council for hearing our request this evening. On behalf of all of the Pawaw Oak Protectors, those here this evening, as well as friends and sympathizers at large, we all would like to thank you, as well as Manager Lynch, Mr. Marshand, Kim Zanino of the Lowell Historic Board, Peter Maloney of the Engineers Department, Rosemary Cashman of the Inspection Department, Luisa Varnum, and Mr. Christopher Zachary of the Conservation Commission, for all of your help that you have expressed since we met with you on March 9th. We are officially here this evening to follow through on that meeting we had with you on March 9th, and, again, we are asking that the council, by city ordinance, proclaim the Pawaw Oak as a historic city landmark on city public property, and preserve it as a mini-monument park honoring its sacred significance to the Native American community, as well as the important role it played in the American Revolution. As well, we are also asking that a full survey in due time be completed, that permanent boundary markers be placed around the tree itself, and the right-of-way adjacent to the tree, and that the city give permission in due time to the park department, as well as concerned public who would like to freely care for the tree in the neighborhood, and allow us to implement the recommendations provided to us by the arborist who is licensed here and here this evening, who will speak, Mr. John Coppinger, to my right and to your left. Also with me this evening is Mr. Gene Winter. Mr. Winter is a registered archaeologist, historian, and curator at the Peapody Museum in Andover at Phillips Academy. Both Mr. Winter and Mr. Coppinger, as well as myself, all live in the Belvidere neighborhood of Lowell, and we thank you for hearing us. Here this evening, could not be with us, some very important people, but who give us their blessings. Mr. Tom Libby of the Greater Lowell Indian Cultural Association, who is the current president, as well as Chief Anquetasi, Ed Gilmet. He's taken ill, but he wanted to be here this evening, and he extends his blessings. One other very important person sent me an email just yesterday, she expresses her apologies for not being able to be here due to previous commitments, and I will read what she sent me, and she gave me the permission to quote, and I quote, "The old conquered chapter of the daughters of the American Revolution fully supports the efforts of the Pawaw Oak Protectors to conserve this tree and its historic significance for future generations." Unquote. Kimberly A. Whitworth Esquire, President, The Old Conquered Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, August 23rd, 2010. I would also like to thank many people, both in the city and in the community, who have expressed their support for this cause. I have here a mimeograph from March 31st from the Lowell Sun, an article published saying, "Historic Spot Marked, Pawaw Oak in Clark Road Set Apart by Members of Molly Varnum Chapter." And this is the very great-great uncle of Luisa Varnum, who is on our Conservation Commission. And I won't read the whole article, but there's one little paragraph here in the middle that says, quote, "The park department recently cleared a spot around the oak, and the placing of the cast-iron marker now makes the tree clearly visible from the roadway." Unquote. So a precedent has been set, that the city does care about the tree, as of March 31st, 1931, when they put the sign there, and I believe that this gives significance and value to the ability for the city to follow through on this, and finally declare the Pawaw Oak as a public tree on city property, to never be confused again by private property owners thinking that they own the tree. One last thing I would like to say is, I don't know how many of us here in the United States, 300 million Americans, can say that they live in a neighborhood, or a city, or even a state of the 50 states, that played a significant role in the birth of our very nation, and we here in Lowell can say that because of the Pawaw Oak. Because the menitmen and the militia who met at that tree in April of 1775, many of whom lost their lives and are buried in the Hon Clark Cemetery on Alcott Street in Lowell, a cemetery which Kim Zanino is trying to save, and I support her cause, marched to Concon and Lexington that day with hundreds of other men from Tewksbury, because Belvidere was a little hamlet of Tewksbury at that time, before that it was a native was a little hamlet of Tewksbury at that time, before that it was a Native American podunk. They met there at the tree and they marched to Concord and Lexington as subjects of the British Crown. And later that day, they did not all come home, and they came back as free American citizens. So we should be proud that we have this tree in our city, and we should honor it as a treasure. And on that note, I leave you, and I hand it over to Mr. Winter and then Mr. Carpenter. Thank you very much.
If I could just remind you, we do have a five-minute rule, so... Please, please go forward.
Sarah Swan Griffin wrote a book, published in 1930, and in it, she talks about the Pawaw Oak, the Clark family, the Hunt family, and the Indian trail that became Clark Road. The question is, where did she get the information, and how true can it be? So I've undertaken research to at least come up with the probabilities. For example, Margaret Winthrop, the wife of our first governor, was given a grant because they didn't expect that Governor Winthrop was going to live too much longer. He did, as a matter of fact, but they didn't know it at the time. Massachusetts Bay had no money, so they granted Margaret a grant of land. This grant of land started at the Merrimack River, included two and a half miles upstream to the south on the Concord River, and then swung in a circular line all the way to the Andover Line. That included 3,000 acres. Now, if you've read Lowell history, you probably already knew that. I won't ask you to raise your hand. Mrs. Winthrop, Margaret Winthrop died, oh, by the way, it was in 1640 that she got the grant. Of course, the Warmusset Indians were still living on this land. The town of Billrica finally was occupied in 1655, as well as Chemsford. And these people were, from these two towns, were interested in their neighbors, the Warmusset It's interesting that Billrica kept all colonials out of Margaret Winthrop's grant. All the way, almost to 1700, they kept all colonials out. They even sent teams of surveyors in to locate where people had put in stakes, thinking they'd make a future farm. So the reason for researching that little point is that, how did Samuel Hunt, who bought the first land within that grant? He bought from Adam Winthrop, Margaret's grandson, after she had died, one-fifth of a division of one-third of the total 3,000. Okay, so we're looking at the 3,000 acres, who was divided into three sections. The first section near the Concord River was sold by Adam, or at least he tried to sell it. The second, third, fell to Stephen Winthrop, who happened to be living in England and died just before the sale was to occur. He had two daughters, so the daughters made the inheritance of that third land. My time is almost up. What I'm pointing out is, no colonial occupants on the land until Billrica hired a soldier to occupy Hunts Falls. His name was Samuel Hunt, and he was there because they needed to protect the towns of Billrica and Chemsford. And he was paid as a soldier, I do believe. Can I prove that? No. Was he occupying land that Billrica kept people out? Yes, but they sent him. How do I know he was a soldier? Because I found the records. He fought in King Philip's War. I'll stop there. But, see, one sentence, I want to end with the fact that I'm building a social context for the Pawaw Oak in the landscape surrounding it. I'm also making a study of the landscape itself, reflecting the effect of the early farming and occupation years, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Carpenter, and I'm a registered consulting arborist, and I was, George has asked me to come here and speak about the health and the integrity of the tree. It's definitely, it's an old tree, it's had a rough life, as evidenced by the missing branches on the tree. And if you want to save the tree, I think you need to take steps immediately to begin doing that. Old trees aren't like young new trees, they're growing very slowly, if they're growing at all, so they don't respond very well to disturbances around the tree. They don't like too much water, and they don't like too much fertilizer, and they also cannot take too much competition around the trees. So my recommendation for trying to save this tree is to create a more tree-friendly habitat, which would include reducing the competition in the area of the tree within the drip line, which would be removing the turf and some of the ornamental arbivides that are planted underneath the tree. I'd also recommend removing any irrigation that may be falling within the drip line of the tree. Irrigation can decay an old tree that doesn't like to have water. It's evolved for many years without an automatic system, and it looks to me like the adjacent turf is getting watered more than the tree would appreciate. And then the other thing I would do is try to restore a more forest-like condition within the drip zone of the tree, underneath the branches, which would be to put back in what you see in the woods, decayed, naturally decayed leaves. The other thing I'd also recommend doing is a more thorough investigation of the tree, which would include taking soil and tissue samples, and also investigating a little more thoroughly the root system to make sure that there's not extensive decay within the roots. And the last thing I'd recommend, there are a few dead branches up within the canopy of the tree, so I'd recommend very carefully removing those trees in order to establish a baseline, thereby you can, if you closely monitor the tree over the years, you can tell how well the tree is responding to these other treatments I've recommended. If it's continuing to get more dead branches, the tree is declining, otherwise it may be responding more favorably to what I've recommended. And just continue to monitor the tree for signs of decline. That's all I have to say on the health of the tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Motion to refer to the City Manager by Councilor Mercy, a second by Councilor Mendonza. Do we have a question?
No, I'd like to comment. I think that I should never see, "A palm is lovely as a tree, a tree that may in summer wear a nest of robins in her hair, a tree that looks at God all day and lifts her leafy arms to pray." I think that I shall never see a palm as lovely as a tree. What they're saying is absolutely true. It's a beautiful piece of history that they're trying to preserve, and I, along with the people that are here, would like to refer that to you. And I know that the care of the tree is something that is important, but I don't know that we have the money, but I know that they would like to refer their request to you, Mr. Manager, to perhaps get some sort of a city ordinance by this council, specific and unique to the tree itself, to proclaim that this is a public tree protected by historical landmarks and Native American holy site that exists on city property. I think it's only fair that we could probably try to do that, and I think that's number one, what they're trying to do. And then if we can find a way to, you know, remove some sort of, you know, I don't know how eloquently he put it, but if we could try to preserve it a little bit longer, that would be great. Thank you.
Before I call for a vote and recognize, Councilor Mendonza, is there an Edward O'Keefe in the audience? We had one more person ready to speak, and I apologize. Mr. O'Keefe.
My name's Edward O'Keefe, I live in South Lowell, I'm Massachusetts Wabunaki descent. Yes, I just really feel that it's very important for native people in Lowell, Greater Lowell, and New England, in the Council Oak and the Pawaw Oak, just the religious and social culture around the tree, as well as just even the American Revolution, and it is very important. It's a very important piece of history, and I just wanted to voice that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Councilor Mendonza?
The supporters of this effort is certainly very enthusiastic and dedicated. I've learned quite a bit of Lowell history from the packets they've sent me, about the history of the area. Maybe if, regarding the health of the tree, if maybe through the mayor to Mr. Carpenter, I'm just, I know trees aren't immortal, eventually they have a life cycle, just like any other animal or plant, and I'm just wondering, what would be the typical lifetime of an oak that's well-cared-for, not, obviously, if you don't, I don't know, if he is an expert could provide some estimate?
Sure. The typical lifespan of an oak in a forest could be upwards of 1,000 years, but when you put it in a more urban situation, it's going to be drastically reduced. You know, the average lifespan of a newly planted city tree could be as low as 10 years. So that, when a tree was first growing, Clark Road, as has been referenced, Clark Road was first an Indian path, and then it was a non-paved road, which is more porous, allows water and air to get into the tree roads. So now, there's a lot of things that have been compromised around the tree since it began growing in those conditions, so it's certainly not going to live 1,000 years, but it's quite clearly lived a long time longer than 10 years, so it's got some life left in it, but it's really hard to say definitively how long that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you have an estimated cost of what it would take to put it back to a little bit of healthiness?
Well, I was just trying to get a sense of, if we're putting this effort in, how much longer can we sustain the tree? And it seems like it's possible, there could be many decades at least, so it might be worth the effort. So I think if we refer this to the manager, there are four points in their letter here that they would like addressed, if the manager could report back to us. Some of them seem straightforward, one of them may have some cost to it, on what it would involve in that effort.
Mr. Manager?
If I may, to the, Mr. Mayor and to the council, we have been working, Mr. Marshand's been working closely with the Engineers Office and Law Office, as well as with the Protectors, and we'll be happy to get a report on what Mr. Marshand has been doing and the city's been doing, and then in response to the various issues that have been raised.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor referring the matter to the manager's office signify by saying aye? Opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. Thank you. Next item, addressed to the City of Lowell Parking Department, is requesting for a 15-minute parking permit for the parking curb in front of the store located on Liberty Street, 180 Liberty Street. Refer to the Traffic Engineer by Councilor Martin, second by Councilor Elliott. All those in favor referring it to the Traffic Engineer signify by saying aye. Opposed to vote. Next, we have conduit location, National Grid to play, 85 feet in front of Merrimack Street. And we have Verizon, New England, replaced, to place 20 feet Jackson Street, 510 feet University Avenue, and 300 feet Pataque Street. And then National Grid requests three easements, Jackson Street, for underground electrical supply. The first two get referred to a public hearing on September 14th by Councilor Murphy, second by Councilor Mendonza. All those in favor referring it to public hearing signify by saying aye. Opposed to vote. The last item by National Grid, refer to the Lot Department by Councilor Martin, second by Councilor Dakota. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed to vote. Last item under claims, we have four claims for property damage. Motion by Councilor Carfield, second by Councilor Broderick, refer those to the Lot Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Vote. Thank you. Moving on to the motion portion of the agenda. First motion by Councilor Mercy, request the City Manager to provide a report on the tax-collecting maintenance policies practiced by the city on foreclosed and bank-owned properties. How many pieces of property has been acquired and sold? Who acquired the property? How much money was properly, how much money was property acquired for? And lastly, where was the money deposited, if any? Second by Councilor Dakota. Councilor Mercy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion, more or less, speaks for itself, and I'm concerned about the last three years. And I know that you probably can't remember that, so I wrote it all down so I could give it to you. And having that thought in mind, when homes fall under foreclosure and banks don't assume the responsibility of paying the property taxes, and no money then will be coming into the city, how is that gap filled, and how do we prepare for that loss of that money? Because it's not, it's getting quite large now where this is happening, so where do we fill this gap with the money? How do we, I mean, how, where does it come from if we're not getting it in? So we have X number of properties, and let's say 15% of those properties are going into foreclosure, and it's, we're not getting taxes for that anymore, what do we do with the additional money? How do we offset the gap? Do we pass it on to the, that's, the taxes go up? Or where does, are we anticipating or preparing for any of that gap?
Mr. Manager?
Counselor, I think we can get you a more complete report, obviously, you know, if the council, if the council approves this motion, and, but for a quick summary, I'll have Mr. Moses speak to the points.
I'd have to say, it's not unheard of for a bank not to pay taxes, but in general, even after foreclosure, those banks continue to pay those taxes, because there are some fairly important implications of a bank owning real estate that they're not keeping up with the taxes. It affects their own balance sheet. There are a handful of them out there, and if you scan the tax title list, you'll see that very few of the properties on our tax title list are actually owned by a bank.
Learned about foreclosed properties, bank-owned properties, that, and I know that some banks don't follow through, so I want to know if this existed in the City Hall anywhere, and what happened with those properties. I know that Adam Bakie comes before us once in a while, and he said, "Here's some property right here, it's deemed surplus. If the council votes it to be surplus, that we see no city use for this property." What happens to that property? Who? I'm concerned about who buys this property and where?
The banks are not buying the property when we sell it.
You sell it, so how do you sell it? You put an ad in the paper?
We put an RFP out.
Well, I want to know in the last three years who bought the property, and I want to, like, a report on...
If I may, just for clarification, Counselor, are you speaking of bank-foreclosed properties or city-foreclosed properties?
I'm speaking about both, really. More or less, private property that people can't afford anymore, and it falls in, and the bank is assuming it, and they don't...
So it's bank-foreclosed properties?
Yes. That the city will acquire?
See, the city, well, the city won't acquire those. The bank forecloses, someone doesn't pay their mortgage, the bank forecloses and takes the property away from the, that individual or entity, and then they in turn sell the, you know, they sell the property to another private party. And that, in fact, is what's happening in many cases here in the city, is that it's actually a market for some people who want to get into the housing market by picking up these bank-foreclosed properties. So they buy those, and we really don't have that type of, we have some of that information available.
But we have some property that the city acquires.
We have...
That's what I want to be focusing on.
Okay, you want to be focusing... Okay, you want to be focusing, okay, on the city-foreclosed properties.
That's right.
Okay. We can, we can.
I do want to clear.
And properties that were demolished, and now there's the land. Who's buying up this land?
Well, nobody's buying anything up until it comes to the city council. If it's a city, if the city takes a piece of property for any reason, or assumes ownership, if we sell it, it has to go to the city, we have to bring it to you first.
And you have, and I want to know about this property. I want to know, where did it go once it left this vote? I want to know what happened to it.
After we, after we've sold it?
Right.
Okay, see, I, I, I'm a little confused because I'm not quite sure exactly what the, the request is, the motion is, whether it's bank-owned properties or city-owned properties. It seems like it's more city-owned properties.
City-owned property.
And then, I guess, the question you're seeking is, after we sold it, after we've brought a, in the last three years, we've brought a property to you and said, we'd like to sell it.
Because we, it's surplus, and we can't use it anymore.
It's surplus. Then we, what, you want to know what happened to it?
Right. That's what, for the past three years.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Next motion by Counsel Mercia, request the city manager have the property department install a streetlight on pole number 32-2 in front of 30 Barry Road, seconded by Counsel Broderick. Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself in that the pole is there, but there's no light in it. They just want a light. Thank you.
All those in favor, oh, Counsel Madonza.
Just a quick question, because I made a mistake when I, on a street name. Do you mean Barry or Berry? Because I didn't know there was a Barry.
Oh, Berry. Is it Berry?
It's A for West Meadow?
Yes.
It's Berry.
Berry, B-E-R-R-Y, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
So noted. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Next motion by Counsel Carfield, city council requests the city manager find ways and means of replacing the sidewalks on Stevens Street, seconded by Counsel Dakota. Counsel Carfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The sidewalks from Chatham or Uppam Street to Parker Street, many of them are lower than the street itself, and the street's been repaved. I received a call from Father Raymond Benoit, Pat Parishion of St. Margaret's Church, and I met with him last Wednesday, a week ago, and he asked me about who's responsible for the sidewalks, the homeowner or the city. I said, the city. He indicated that they had a brand-new snowblower, and the sidewalks at St. Margaret's School have just disintegrated, disintegrated, and evidently ruined, ruined the snowblower. So they, Mr. Mayor, they went out and brought in a contractor to look at the sidewalks at the school, and I gave this copy to the manager. And to repair the sidewalks is almost $8,000 if they put in bituminous sub-concrete. So I'd like to, Mr. Manager, if you can go up and meet with Father Benoit or Sister Laurie at St. Margaret's School, look at the, the condition of those sidewalks, and maybe look at the entire sidewalk issue that's up there. That's the gist of the motion.
Anyone else want to be heard on the motion? Would my colleagues mind if I commented from the chair? I'd just like to say that I'm actually not going to support the motion because of the maker of the motion. In my opinion, it's, it's very disingenuous for Counsel Carfield to be bringing in motions, council meeting after council meeting, that costs this city money out of the FY11 budget, when Counsel Carfield voted against every line item in the FY11 budget, and then voted against the full budget. So I don't plan to support this.
I'll make sure Father Benoit gets your message.
Please, please, please. Would you, if we want to have a roll call, just list me as opposed. All those in favor?
Well, the, the motion is not, if I may, it's, it's for the manager to look at this, see if there's funding, not necessarily, we don't know that this can be done or not. I mean, I get, I had a call this week about a request for a sidewalk too, so, you know, I, I think it's, I'd be appreciative of how the folks go about getting a sidewalk repaired, because we all get those requests. So, so for that reason, I think, you know, that, I think that's what the, this motion is about.
Correct. I'm just making, I'm just making a point, there are.
This sidewalk on Stevens Street. I understand, I understand, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Broderick.
Thank you. I was just going to mention the same thing, and I would hope that in our report, Mr. Manager, if we could get, you know, is, we talked about this, is having some type of priority and a capital improvement through DPW, and to see where this falls and how things are placed. I think it's important because we all do get these calls, and people at home would love to have new sidewalks, and I prioritize, how is it done? Is it done, you know, by, it's a school, obviously, you know, and what are the priorities and so on, so that, you know, we're all going to get calls, and we all do as far as sidewalks. So if we, you know, I'm going to support getting a report on this and see what we get for information. Thank you.
Let's take a roll call.
Counsel Madonza.
Yeah, well, I was just going to speak. I understand both sides. What I do know, though, is having gone through Stevens Street, is that the sidewalks are clearly in poor condition, and I can understand some of the residents there thinking that they need to be repaired. We certainly have a process in place. I am concerned that this is one of our gateway streets in the sense that a lot of people coming to Lowell off of the, well, near the, the Cross Point Towers now area, often use this street and Chelmsford Street as the primary access roads into the parts of Lowell, and it, it really just looks really bad. So it, that should give it some priority, but still, it should follow the process that they have in place for determining street repaving and sidewalk repairs.
Again, I think the sidewalk work does need to be done. I just think the motion is disingenuous. So we'll have a roll call. Roll call.
Counselor Carfield.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Madonza.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Milonaza.
No.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Eight As, one N.
Next motion by Counsel Carfield, motion, city council requests the city manager to report on the properties located at the corner of Middlesex and School Streets and the corner of Thondike and Highland Street, and also report on the enforcement of the minimum maintenance ordinance, seconded by Counsel Broderick. Counsel Carfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did file a motion pertaining to three buildings a while back, and there's a hotel downtown that the owner did do some aesthetic repair to the hotel, and it looks a lot better. But the other two buildings, the one at the corner of Middlesex and School Street, it's a brand-new condominiums, the weeds are two to three feet high. And I'm questioning, why isn't the city enforcing the minimum maintenance ordinance on the, on this building? It's, it's, it's horrible, Mr. Manager. I mean, anyone else would have the inspector knock on the door and say, clean up your yard?
We have, in fact, been out at the, at both of these properties, and they, they're in a particular state of being handled. We'll get you a full report on that, Counselor.
I mean, the weeds are just.
I understand. We were actually taking action on the.
It's overgrown, and it's, it's, you know, it's not fair to the entire neighborhood. And I've been following the ZBA, the building on the corner of Thondike and Highland Street, what is happening with that building? It's still, the roof is burnt off, there's a blue top hum that's blowing in the wind, and.
Again, Counselor, I'm more than happy to get you a report on this for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Next motion by Counsel Dakota, city council requests the city manager to have the appropriate department review and report on the creation of reinstituting incentive programs designed to encourage homeownerships to increase the property value of blighted homes in Lowell, seconded by Counsel Mercia. Counsel Dakota.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The intent of this motion is determine if there are opportunities to decrease the number of blighted homes in the city or to increase property values by determining if there are incentive programs that we can provide using grant funds to incentivize homeowners to fix up homes. And I understand from Mr. Bakie that this type of program has been used, not necessarily to the level of success, success that they would have liked, so either maybe restructuring it so it's more successful, or trying a new similar program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Martin.
I, I think it's a good, certainly a good idea, and I think, you know, a lot of times we run up against problems with use of federal funds, and there seems to be restrictions on providing funds to private parties for private homeowners anyway. And, and I think we, we need to resist that, or at least look at ways where we can push back at some of that regulation. I mean, we've got members of the Massachusetts Congressional delegation in high-ranking positions in some of these committees that oversee this. We voted tonight, you know, a quarter of a million-dollar tax exemption for a company that is going to do some good things here in the city, you know, but there should be an opportunity for the individual who's looking to invest, you know, in their home, in the city. We give breaks all the time to, to business entities, and I don't think the homeowner gets a fair shake. There are some opportunities for low and moderate-income people, but the restrictions those come with are enough to tie you up for a generation. So I, I, I have a lot of confidence in DPD, and as, as they look at that, if they run into roadblocks, I'd like to know what those roadblocks are, and, and maybe work the political system for a better solution.
Mr. Manager?
It's, Counsel Dakota mentioned a discussion that we had with Mr. Bakie. We did try to develop a program using the Neighborhood Stabilization Program that came through the federal government, and we weren't able to make it work. I, I'll have to get you a full report on the problems with that, but it is an issue that we would like to see if we could find a, a way to provide some assistance, because we do think that homeownership and, you know, helping people make repairs to their homes can have a very important, and particularly, and it sort of ties in with something that we were kind of touching upon with Counsel Mercy's motion, people that are coming into buying up bank-foreclosed properties, and then being able to invest in those neighborhoods, and if there's something that can be done to help them along in that process, that's how we can really rebuild some of our neighborhoods. So a lot of this all ties in together, and we, certainly, something we've done work on, we wanted to continue to do work on, and we'll get a report to Counsel, Counsel Dakota's motion that addresses some of those issues that you've raised, Counsel Martin.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Next motion by Counsel Dakota, city council requests the city manager consider using workshops and supportive signage to elevate Lowell's municipal culture, presenting expectations for customer service and ethical behavior, seconded by Counsel Carfield. Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've seen lots of improvements in City Hall over the last six years since I've been downtown, and I believe that it's time to take the next step and start addressing customer service issues and just general expectations of behavior. And the term municipal culture might not be familiar to a lot of people, but about 15, 20 years ago, people began studying corporate, corporations that were very successful, and trying to figure out why it was that they were successful. And across the board, it was because the leader of the corporation, the manager, the CEO, developed a very strong corporate culture, where people understood their expectations, and they believed themselves to be representatives of that culture, both at work and outside of work. So the workshops is one method, but perhaps just an assessment of where we're at and some ideas on how we can improve the organizational structure and culture in Lowell.
Mr. Manager?
I think this is a great motion, and I'm very happy to respond to this. We, I think we've done some, we've taken some steps along these lines of improving the organizational culture in terms, in terms of customer service and ethics and responsiveness, and I'm happy to report on that, but there's much more work to be done. You know, we're, we're doing, we've done some department head training, and we're, we're looking to roll that out more into the departments, and we've got plans to, you know, City Hall, make City Hall a bit more friendly for people coming in. We're planning to put a greeter downstairs to help people work their way through the maze of City Hall, or we, I think the efforts that we're making, even with the reorganization of the inspectional services, is designed around the notion of, you know, making us more responsive and making us more concerned about customer service. So I think we're, but again, much more needs to be done, and we have plans to roll out moving forward. I'm happy to, I think it's a great motion, I'm happy to respond to this.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Last motion of the evening before we return to executive session by Counsel Broderick, request manager to report on the visibility of retaining outside counsel for the Grand Manet condominiums, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Counsel Broderick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say that the city solicitor's done a tremendous job in, in all the cases that, that the department has handled, and this is not any indication of, of any sense of how I feel about that. You know, we had a, a meeting last, two weeks ago, and without getting into what was said and presented, this is, in my opinion, seems to be a very specialized environmental case, very complex. We're down staff in that department as we are in others, I think we've down a couple attorneys in the city, and the question really is just, you know, could we get a report? Is this something that makes sense to, to bring in some help? And do we, does the solicitor's office have the manpower and the time to dedicate the resources to this, basically? That's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. That being the end of the agenda, I do have a paragraph prepared by both the city clerk and the city solicitor, if I could read it to get it into the record. Motion to return to executive session, which stands recess from last evening for the purpose of discussing and deliberating a successive contract with the city manager as it relates to strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, public discussion of which could be detrimental to the city's position, and we will not be returning to open session. Motion to go into executive session by Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Madonza. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Counsel Martin.
Is it anticipated we wouldn't conclude our deliberations, then?
It, I'll defer that question to, to the solicitor.
Wouldn't it be possible to return to open session?
Madam Solicitor.
It's, it's certainly possible that, that we would conclude, you can, of course, conclude in executive session. So either way, you can end the executive session, either by completing the business of the executive session, or concluding that portion of the executive session, or recessing even for a further day.
We could, we could amend the last paragraph instead of saying we will not, we may not return to.
Well, let me, could I just?
Yes.
Follow up? So, so if we conclude an executive session tonight, and there's no longer need for executive session because there's no longer need for confidentiality of negotiations back and forth, we just, we wouldn't have to necessarily meet in open session, we could just release all the.
That's correct. Every vote, everything that you do in executive session eventually becomes public in any, anyway. And, and certainly, all the votes are, are public, as well as the business of the executive session. So all of the votes that are taken in an executive session have the full force and effect of the same vote, of the votes that would be taken in open session. You could conclude all of that matter in executive session, and, and also with that, timely take up the issue of turning over all of the information of the executive session and making it public.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn, go into executive session by Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Broderick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. We stand adjourned. Meet in the mayor's reception room.